And also at 5:02. Thanks for coming, thanks for coming early. I apologize for the time change. Lots of town meetings going on, lots of excitement. So, appreciate you all coming. We're boring, I guess. So, we'll start. Any on the agenda? Any community comments? They'll be an opportunity to ask questions, but any community comments? No? Nothing? Alright. Bill? Well, thank you Greg. Taking over item three.
Thank you. And could we hang on? Welcome back to the first special schools committee meeting of 2016-2017. Before we get to number three, I just want to quickly say to the school committee, thank you for having me come back for another year. I truly enjoyed the experience last year and am grateful for that experience and I very much look forward to continuing to work for Bellevue for another year. Item number three is meant to be introduction of new administrative staff. So as you know, we have a new director of special education district-wide, Christine Smith. Many of you recognize Christine and you were part of the process that we went through during a number of interviews and public meetings. Christine is here and Jackie Daly, who is our new assistant principal at Pine Hill, is with us as well. Both of them are very, very strong additions to our leadership team and we're all very much looking forward to working with them this year and wish them well and welcome.
Thank you.
Moving right along. This is great, yeah. I have a report. There are reports.
So, under reports Greg, Dr. Brown unfortunately is ill and not able to be here tonight. You have a copy of her report in your packet. Karen and I would be happy to yield any questions you might field, any questions you might have. We may know the answers, we may not. If we don't, we'll get back to you.
Can you remind me the breakdown of the plus teachers? I know Romer is at Chickering exclusively, so we have Sonora Bridge and Sonora Salado at Pine Hill.
Yes.
And what's the FTE for both of those?
So, for Ms. Bridge, it's she's gone from a .7 to a 1.0, so she's full-time. And Ms. Salado will spend .2 FTE here at Pine Hill and she'll be an additional .5 at Chickering.
So I asked everybody, I sent out an email earlier, some of the standard reports. Since we have them, we can read them. If people want to read them before they get here and ask any questions, we can move along maybe faster through the meetings and have more time for discussion. Does anybody have any questions about Barbara's?
I have Susan from one of the new liaison for from advisor.
Oh.
So Susan O'Ronan. And one of the questions, Emily and Lori, the educational assistants, where are they all in K-12? Do we have two exit and two enter?
No, I can, I'll go through that in my book.
You will, okay. So I'll give you a check. Thank you very much.
So what's your answer?
O'Ronan. I can spell it. A-J-R-O-N-I-A-N. And then Ziggy is staying on, but she just didn't make it tonight.
George didn't want to come to get seen.
As Jerry said, busy fall coming.
Is this your first year coming?
Yes. So I am going to be all around.
Thank you. That's going to be really exciting. Okay, so that's Barbara's. Would you? Karen?
Yes, I just wanted to highlight the mentoring and induction program that Ms. Callie Ian facilitates for us. She's the measure coordinator for the K-12, even though in our system of schools, she does that for us. And how she welcomed all of our new educators and new mentors for a full day was incredible with the chairman superintendent, the president, the administration. They talked a little bit about the both mindset, what you can do instead of what you can't. And also just about the mentoring relationship. It was a great launch to the year and there are a series of follow-up sessions. So any questions about the mentoring, certainly I can take those. And we've launched the science, technology, engineering, and computer science curriculum review. We've already met as a K-5 team with some educators joining us, aligned one unit across the two schools. We'll launch that on September 28th as we all come together, start with a great inquiry-based scientific lesson at the beginning and then launch it with all of the K-5 educators and special educators during that session. There will be surveys for families, for students in grades five, seven, and 10, for our educators and for our administrators, because it's a holistic view of the curriculum from curriculum instruction, leadership assessment, and professional development. And I had mentioned that last spring, but I just wanted to break that to the forefront because that's an important part of who we are, actually, that we have six through 12 today. So you'll see some of that happening and then we'll go to some information. And educator evaluation is underway.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, one quick question. The full report presented to school committees in November, what's your, is it kind of going to be a staged rollout or is it going to be a new, is it just going to be school year 2017, starts off with revised curriculum? What's the implementation target?
It's going to take us some time. There'll be a detailed action plan. The report will synthesize all of the information from the surveys that we gather, what is aligned, what is not. I know by the end of this school year, one unit across every grade level at K to five will be aligned to the new standards. And what we're noticing is a lot of it is already done. So it's just articulating what's due, what's missing, and then what's to be completely changed. And that's what the educators will be doing.
Just quickly, if the special computer science, I'm thinking, but also the technology engineering, is a lot of that just being edited within the science curriculum? Are they looking to be more add-on?
It's both. The way the document was written for science, technology, engineering, it was embedded in some places in the science. You will see that through the use of whatever tool is needed. A high school example comes to mind, I can't think of the elementary grade of probes. That's a confusion of the technology into the curriculum. But it's also standalone. We are lucky here at Pine Hill that you have Teresa Benne, who teaches the digital literacy skills that are part of that curriculum. And we also teach the computer science skills that are brand-new. So it's you and Teresa Benne, as well as Lori Ryan in the library does the computer sciences. So there's a lot of great things happening that this curriculum review will highlight.
So there's not a sense of that it's another add-on, we've got to figure out what to take out?
No, certainly not. That's a great part of being here at Pine Hill.
There's a STEM or a science, technology, engineering director? Or was there a new position for the multiple high schools? Am I thinking that's proposed?
Technology engineering.
Technology engineering and actually he is overseeing computer science.
Okay, so that's the reason?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the reason, yes. And it seems like, can we talk about that? Kind of like music, was K-12, was that?
At the time, it was a part of the conversation, but we never went forward from that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you Karen. Thank you Greg. I have just some talking points I'd like to go through with my report, hopefully clarify some questions that have already come up. First, I would like to, I'm pleased to report that we are very successful opening to the school year here at Pine Hill. I think that the Pine Hill professional staff, the educational assistants are to be commended for this. Everybody was ready to go and had a very successful opening. Special thanks to Dr. Brown and Karen Gomond, the administrative assistant, who are here all summer and working hard to prepare for the opening. And they were assisted later in the summer by our new assistant principal, Jackie, and Janay Evilar in the front office. So thank you to them for their hard work. And then I also especially want to thank and recognize the excellent work of Ozmar Marquez, Agatha Freeman, Ryan, under the very, very, very capable and able supervision of our H-300, Peter Gimble. You know, they did their thing this summer, they always do, they go above and beyond. We have high expectations for how our facilities will look and are being maintained. And I can tell you for the second summer, they certainly hit that mark in my opinion. I thought the building looked spectacular for opening day. As we were walking through, Doug and I were able to do a walkthrough with Peter, with Ralph Kelly, and with Dr. Brown. And you know, after we went through the building and we were going from the library way to the core, down to the new addition of the K classrooms and the gymnasium, my comment was that I've worked in many, many buildings that are newer than the core building at Pine Hill, but I have to tell you, I've never seen any of them look as good and be as well-maintained as the facilities here at Pine Hill. And that's really to be commended. And I think it's, you know, it's a mark of the really hard work that our staff do, but also the commitment to maintaining the facilities that the town has. So that's, that was great to see. In terms of a personnel update, you have received the listing of new staff to the district. We've introduced Jaclyn and Christine. You all very familiar with the fact that Doug has been, is the interim business manager this year. And something I'll talk more about, Donna Fiori was reassigned. You all know Donna Fiori was the special education administrator assistant here. She's been reassigned to the central office. I'm pleased to report that there were no professional staff turnovers this year. All professional staff are back. We have, we do have the three new teachers, which were the two new classroom teachers who identified. And our first teacher, they were provided for in the FY17, the funding was provided for, as you know, the FY17 budget. And then the educational assistants, so these are, there are, every year there's usually moving parts around the educational assistants. They take on different responsibilities, but we have three, these are three new staff members. Two of these staff members replaced, staff members who left, resigned. One of them, the third one, is actually a Dover Public School employee assigned to the Pine Hill school. And we'll talk again, I'll mention that in a little more detail in just a few minutes. There's still one EA hired to be hired. We have our late resignation and a bargain in staff that we're going to fill back. In the end, with the EAs, last year's budget funded 19 full-time equivalent EAs. As we went through the budget process, as a reminder, last year, we reduced the equivalent of 1.4 FTEs from the educational assistant staff. We now, though, we have, we have 19 EAs in the building. One is the Dover Public School employee. The 18th is being funded by the REAP grant. There was additional funding based on carryover, so we're funding that position. And so the net budget impact is the 17 EA. So we're actually .6 FTEs below in terms of the budget impact. Next month, when we do our first comprehensive monthly report, there'll be more information and detail about what that budget impact is on the EA lines. There were some shifts to EA3s because of some new one-to-one circumstances, so we're working through those details. But overall, I think really it's a budget impact.
So 19 is regular and N?
Yes, combination, regular and N.
With the regular and N statement?
No, we...
So that .6 below is special education?
Right, so there's seven regular and TAs. You have the 12 special education TAs. But, well, 11 special education TAs because the educational assistant funded by the REAP grant is, that's the literacy intervention.
12. One's funded by REAP grant and one is the corrupt.
Is that including the head count that's being hired?
It does, yes. Yeah, that's a TV. That's a TV. One other point, on the list, it says assistant one, new K class. So I just want to clarify that. We didn't add a new K class, we have three K sessions last year. Two of the regular EAs were assigned to the three classes. This year is an EA assigned to each of the K class. So that's what that means. Okay, any questions there? So, as I indicated in the report, we have reconfigured the administrative assistant position here at Pine Hill, the special education administrative assistant position. During the budget process last year, we had requested the establishment of a .6 FTE administrative support position for the director of special education at the central office level. That was presented to all three school committees and that cost was apportioned as we apportioned those costs in the budget process. As we went through the budget process, we decided to pull that back and out of our request. But when we did that, we indicated that we still need it. We still needed those services and we will look at some different ways to provide that support. And we mentioned at the time that one way we were considering doing that is to take a look at the Pine Hill administrative assistant position. And so that's what we did, that we focused on that very early in the summer. Right now, at Chickering School, the special education administrator assistant is .6 FTE. So what we looked at was some of the duties that went along with that 1.0 FTE. There are, so in the end, by reconfiguring that position to a .6, it's now on par with the other elementary school. And we've adjusted the responsibilities to main responsibilities. So there was some, there was some purchasing and some budget stuff being done by that individual that will be done at the central office level. And then there was quite a bit of time spent on, on two issues with educational assistants. One is making sure that assistants submitted all of their time sheets on a regular basis to the special education administrator assistant. That person took all that information, had to record it on a spreadsheet, that then had to be transmitted to the payroll office in the central office. It took quite a bit of time on a regular basis. So we've changed the practice in how we're collecting that information. So the special education administrator assistant is no longer doing that. We're actually no longer doing time sheets for EAs. We have developed a different practice. EAs are not being paid throughout the school year. Their payroll is a delayed stock, it's one payroll delayed from the professional staff. But every, every EA is assigned daily, enough hours they work per day. Those days are then calculated on a regular basis and the pay rate is equalized and that's how they're being paid. So that's all done right at the very beginning of the year and there's no need for time sheets, et cetera. Attendance is monitored, just like every other staff employee's attendance is monitored. So we were able to take, to remove that from this position. So I feel comfortable that the .6 FTE will meet the needs for that position and that will allow us to then reconfigure, look at the business office associate position at the regional level. That's funding at the regional level. What we were able to do there was that one FTE position, the responsibilities actually broken down into a .6 administrative support for the special education director and then a .4 that supports the regional accounts payable process. So in the net impact financially, there'll be a positive variance impact to the Pine Hill budget based on that, even after we factor in, we haven't determined yet how we're going to factor in that .6, you know, district-wide position. We have to figure that out. But even if it's done the traditional way, it looks like, it looks to me like there'll be, there'll be no impact on the budget.
Plus of all part? 20, 20, 20, 40?
In terms of how the split goes? Yeah, so those central office support positions have been split 33, 33, 34.
Oh.
Yeah, so we're looking at that though. But overall, from a budget perspective, this is a positive thing. And I think that from a work production and workload standpoint, there will be no adverse impact on that. So we're, you know, we're constantly looking at how we can provide the kind of support that's needed.
Can I ask you a question? Did you talk about the contracts, the EA contracts to restructure their payment?
No, there's no language relative to that contract. So that's the reconfiguration of those positions. We did advertise for the .6 position and there's additional information in your packet regarding that potential .6 hire. So it was advertised, job was posted, and as a result of that, one of the candidates that applied will become, not yet, but will become a media family member of one of Barbara's administrators, as I'll write in the information that you receive from me. So there's a school committee policy, policy, policy GBEA under staff ethics conflict of interest. And there are guidelines in that policy that guide the superintendent in terms of a potential hire of a media family member of an administrator. And to do that, in order for that to go forward, superintendent is required under the policy to file a disclosure letter, notice of disclosure with the school committee, identifying what the conflict, what the possible conflict is, and what the circumstances are. And that must be filed two weeks prior to the hiring to become effective. So as indicated in the letter, we have a special education administrator who will be getting married in November. So technically, you know, the policy isn't in effect right now, but out of an abundance of wanting to be as transparent as possible, we felt, and I felt it was, we wanted to make sure that even though technically we weren't meeting that guideline that the policy indicates, we clearly, this hiring is going to take place too much for that ultimately. So we're being as transparent as we possibly can and this, as the policy states, the disclosure notice will be filed with the top level.
So there's been data on this letter? It's 11, I guess, probably. Or was it a date?
Oh, I'm so sorry. So, yes, yeah, technically it's being publicly disclosed today since September 13. Sorry about that.
Can I ask questions about the, how the Geneva Command works in the special ed department? So I understand that the building principal's in charge of the people in her building, but then because there's the overarching director of the districts, how does that, can you just review how?
Sure, sure. So the building principal is charged with making all recommendations for staff to be hired that are working in their building because of the superintendent. And principal's actually hired that staff with approval of the superintendent, that's how the statute agrees. In the case of disposition, disposition will be evaluated by the building principal. So the administrative assistants in each building, it's a responsible responsibility of either, in the case of guidance at the region, because there is a guidance director, that individual does the evaluation for those administrative assistants. All others are done by the building-level principals. So in this case, Barbara will be charged and is responsible for the evaluation of that individual, charged with the day-to-day supervision of that individual. There certainly will be communication, you know, between that administrative assistant and the director of special education.
But the communicate, I mean, everything, Barbara's not included in that whole chain? I mean, that all that communication, it doesn't all go to Barbara every day, does it?
Well, I mean, you know, technically, the building principal, whether it's Pine Hill, Chickering, the high school, the middle school, building principals are responsible for all programs and services that are provided. So building principals are often included in certain special education communications, you know, depending on the nature of what's happening. If the director is looking for some information about a student on IEP, the director in this case will call the administrative assistant to get that information. If there was a question about, you know, transportation, for example, the director needed to know that, the director in that case wouldn't go through the principal to get that information, so it's just going to be administrative assistant. Just as I'll call our administrative assistants during the year for a variety of different pieces of information, even though I'm not director's assistant.
So I, for me, I'm always in a summary mode, so I'm thinking, maybe 9.99% of the time would be fun, but if there was an issue, I think like what would be the chain of command? Because we haven't mentioned the team chair, whether they're called now, it's at the building. So they play role too, and then they report to Barbara as opposed to the director, in which case, what does the director have to do?
So the team chair, both the principal and the director of special education do play a role in the evaluation and supervision of the team chair. The building principal is the primary evaluator and supervisor. The director of special education assists in that evaluation, very similar to the role that principals and assistant principals play off each other with, you know, with classroom teachers and other building staff. So that's how that works there. The way that we're structured now in terms of the team chairs, they are not, they work hand-in-hand and very closely with the administrative assistant. And if the team chair asks them to do something, you know, hopefully they'll do it. But because, because their role is... But because, because their role is, they are a member of the teachers association, they don't have the supervision authority, so they do not take part in, you know, the evaluation and supervision of that staff member formally. So, but certainly the director of special education does and I can understand that there would be some concern or certainly some questions about the fact that, you know, a team chair works directly and closely with the administrative assistant at the building level, but also works closely with the director of special education. So, you know, I get that and there is, there is that possibility. You know, I assume there's always that possibility for some kind of conflict. But this is, this is a process where, you know, our goal is to, when we hire a staff member, we really, really endeavor to try and find, you know, the most competent, the best person for that job. There were a number of candidates that were interviewed. The special education director was not involved in that process at all. The building principal went through that process and in the end, the candidate that we tend to hire, waiting period, is in fact, was the best qualified for that position.
Possibly, as you're going overall, as I'm trying to envision in my head what the org chart would look like, so I'm, would actually just, should we just create an org chart and then it gets filed away with the documents and so years later, if there is a situation where, oh, what is the, what is the hierarchy, especially when Bill likely won't be here to very clearly explain it again?
Yeah.
So I'm thinking like years from now, it's like, oh, Bill said it so well and we had it really clear, but what was it?
Yeah.
With just simply making an org chart, bonding with minutes, we move on, so we have that reference?
Yeah.
It's to some degree from the original hire, the original reorg, maybe a few tweaks a little bit.
I just tried to go.
What are we talking about here? Hiring and the org chart or?
Just an org, just an org chart so that we all sort of understand how that flows because there's been a couple of iterations and seen what.
Yeah.
Great idea.
And then the last thing I'll say is that you should be aware of that, I've had multiple conversations with the council about this process and so it's very rare and I felt that we're proceeding exactly as the policy and state law allows us to.
Is that it for the staff? Everything's covered, staffing?
Yes.
Do we have the budget closeout? We had, we had an update, I think.
Yes.
Yes, the updated one.
Had a table on the front page, a table uplay.
So the update is the package that has your first name and your first name and your campaign.
Everybody got that?
It was, as I was sitting down last night, putting together my concrete points, when I did this table, I thought it was actually very helpful, so I decided to, I can change the report just to get help with all the numbers together, with the circuit breaker and how your actual out-of-district variance goes, so that was the thing. So you have the status of appropriations as of June thirty of two thousand sixteen. Not a lot of changes from what was designed in June, but I did sort of summarize where we, where you sort of ended up. So basically, for editing the year?
There's, there's no new status. So the original one we had, it didn't have the text, not have the status of appropriations. So the new one that we got doesn't?
Oh, do you have, okay, so she took the memo and not the back.
Don't want to change the changes or something.
Sorry.
Okay, okay.
You have a memo?
Yeah. The other, the other part of the bracket.
So we're going to come back to the capital. All right, so we're at status appropriate.
Status of appropriations.
Did I get on that?
So the year ended with positive surplus of just under three million five thousand dollars. The table that is provided for you shows you how that variance was, what is comprised of. So we have twenty-five thousand approximately of the salaries, positive variance, operating income, per the budget came in a little less than eighty thousand positive, your out-of-district came in at about seven thousand dollars plus any budget. And then because of the way you handle circuit breaker, that you only budget for forty percent, we also make up the additional sixty percent, so that's the hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Yeah. We're on the.
On the, yes, so we're on that page, so Greg, if you go to salaries.
Okay, all right. So she made a table and based it on the text on this original first page.
But you can slide the numbers back to your, so if you look at salaries, you can look at your first table at the top.
Yep, makes sense.
Twenty-five thousand, right?
Yep.
The next section totals is seventy-nine thousand.
Got that.
Then where it's hard to actually see what happens, I think this is, we'll tweak your status of appropriations going forward, you can't see the out-of-district operating clearly, so that's why I wanted to point that out because of how the circuit breakers are.
So the one ninety-one is included in the two twenty-three?
So you'll be, you'll be. Yeah, it does the same thing for dollar, it just, it just makes it cleaner to understand all the. Especially since now we're funding circuit breaker differently. Exactly. Right, since they're minus sixty percent. So this is, so we'll actually show, show the circuit breaker sort of on the additional line item.
But this number, so this number, two twenty-three five thousand, that, that changes as we, once we know what the circuit breaker reimbursement is, that, that changes, that's why I've been paying on, because it includes a one ninety-one eight fifty-five. We don't know what the one ninety-one eight eighty-five.
No, we, we do know. What you, what you do though, when you, when you, during the year, the only last circuit breaker that's reflected in the official statement is the forty percent that you already, you're charging.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't put the rest, we know what it is.
So when do we put the rest?
At the end of the year.
I guess that's what I, yeah, that seemed like that. So now we're booking forty and then we add another thirty, do that, thirty-two.
We put the rest of sixty percent.
Okay.
It's just, it's, I mean, it's just how both, how you handle circuit breaker.
There seems like the number will change, is that two twenty-three five thousand nine jump up at some point? Say forty, 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 oh, now it's sixty percent. Now, okay, never mind.
So you really only had positive variance in out-of-district, you got to say that, transportation, eighty-seven thousand dollars. So then when you put the rest in the circuit breaker and that, that grows you to higher.
See, what happens is, is that the budget, the cost as we incur them through the year gets charged to the budget and then gets charged to the forty percent.
So the expenses go directly to circuit breaker to what?
So at the end of the year, sitting in the circuit breaker fund, because that money from the state doesn't go to the town's general fund, it goes into the special circuit breaker We actually then charge.
We take general fund expenses and we charge the circuit breaker to make that.
So the circuit breaker fund is zero, which means that any, any of the remaining funds in the operating budget automatically flows back to the town's general fund. If we did not do that and we left that hundred and ninety-one dollars in the circuit breaker revolving fund, there's, that, the town can't just take that at the end of the year because that's, that's controlled by the school. The only other way to do that would be for the town, for the school committee to authorize town meeting to transfer from that fund back to the town's general fund, a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. That just gets way too complicated. Is that how it works? Not really?
So I'll, I'll ask, I mean, there's a whole one, we discussed this with the previous district manager, and that's what I'm, and I'll, like, show me a picture.
Yes.
And importantly, because those numbers are changed, as we were expecting, we're budgeting forty and now it's sixty, so those numbers will be smaller. And then money's going into a special fund at some point.
It has.
Because my, I'm just, with population increasing, it's a concern.
No, I think that's a good point. I was going, after, after Donald's time, I was going to comment that because of the way we've changed the budget and we're now using more of circuit breaker to pay bills directly and not funding, you know, special education costs by sixty percent, we need to, we need to do more focused reporting back to you on the out-of-district cost so that we're all aware as we go from month to month, we're able to stand it because we, we know we're not going to have that larger than normal sum of money in the circuit breaker account to rely on.
And we know what circuit breaker is if you work this year, based on last year, so we can start including that estimated forty percent in the bottom line here so you can keep monitoring. It'll change, you know, it came out of three, full reimbursement, it used to be where they would say they're going to get sixty percent and then by the end of the year, we get seventy-four, whoever we get a bit, or we're closer to the full now. So you can sort of see that, you'll see it versus just make that, showing up at the last. So are there any questions on just the variances themselves on the two thirty end numbers? So nothing really, there's very few, a lot of changes from last year. Included for your review also is a statement of special revenues that you were involved in. Just showing that go forward from July first to June thirty. And also just do next year fund, then we probably, I'm sure we have actually a contract that does have a plan to do, that does connect to me on, so we'll touch directly on that until. Any questions on the special revenue? If you have the cafeteria, see the food service, dinner, inquiries, they're going down, so you can have a positive results from operations this year. If there's just a building rental, then there's no expenditures, but there is discussion of using that money to pay the custodial staff that has to stay extra to keep the building open. Typically that does happen then?
So, so that's a question that is ripe for each of the two committees, the way we, is, we're looking at that.
How that has been, how it has been and how it can be.
Well, we want to make sure, we want to make sure first of all, that when we have, when we're renting the facilities and groups are paying a fee, the fee they're paying should be their minimum covering the cost of custodians that are required for that rental. And so that cost of, for the custodians, when they get paid, should, should be charged to the building rental account then. And so we're, we're, that's just really looking at that in most detail. What this would suggest is that, that all, all of the monies that custodians earn during rentals will have been paid from the, from the operating budget.
Right, it's, it's charged only if they're not currently working.
So normally they'd be there tonight.
Yes.
So that's not a fee.
That's, there's a whole process we're looking at. My, my question with this is, maybe in fact, go through a September through June year where every time a building issues and is, and is rented, is there a requirement for additional custodian, you know, on, you know, on night staff that's there. To me, that's unusual.
But I mean, evenings are going to be there weekends too. How long has it taken to build up his balance of almost eight thousand dollars? If he's never spent, is that like five years or ten years?
Well, you, it's fourteen, nine is your average.
Is, is that? So it's been there for a while, it's just been.
And the school committee does have the authority to spend those funds and we can vote, we can review what those, what those regulations are. You can't use the money for just anything, but it has to be related to, to the building and the society itself.
Okay, you've also had a detail of what your balance is made up of in the year fund, just a little bit of restricted, so we can talk. Twenty-three thousand dollars, it's already there, there's some that are restricted. You have included a status of appropriations that looks a little different for fiscal year seventeen on the August thirty-first. I didn't recommend making any analysis on that because it's a work in progress as we're starting all the tables in. One thing that is, I think, I mentioned in the report, we have some things covered, but what's not showing up here and covered yet is all the central office shared salaries, that's why you see a lot of zeros in some of those categories. We are also looking at how we're coding certain, you know, salaries, we're really looking at our needs. So we're charging where we want to, right now, the budget's not always there for charging, so you're going to see some, probably some interesting variances, but we're using the actuals from seventeen to start filling fiscal year eighteen. Before your educational systems were buried in teacher's classroom, teacher specialist, for coding purposes, where it's listed on your end of the year report, it should all be in a small function code. So you will see down there, there's one called paraprofessional, it has a little bit, it has some budget adjustments for me, but we didn't capture all the categories of educational system for those adjustments for me. So if you get your next report, I'll create a layout for you.
And if there, with these new monies that are created, with monies being shifted, there will be our requests officially to, let's say, I might have to transfer to these various categories.
But that would be very clearly shown where at the front where it's.
Oh, sure.
Specifically in placement.
And my experience is that, my experience is that it's better to do it in, in bunches that look big rather than a one, you know, here and there.
We need to do that for February, right? It's targeted to have that, that like the format.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I go with that.
Yeah, your first budget.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we want this stuff.
Waiting for everything to have period processing, clean everything in.
So can I ask you one question now? So likely the variance for paraprofessionals is offset by the positive in the two hundred ninety-nine.
Right, so there's, it's not sitting in the right line item. The budget let that.
Yeah, don't leave anything on this report to negative variance at this point.
Right. Because I think we've also had, trying to figuring out how, like, when things are shared by the three districts, figuring out where, what we're paying, what percentage I know differs from each thing and when we approved it. Is there a way to tease that out and maybe try and get some consistency with those, so we can see, we can more clearly see those. If you might get consistency, that would be something that we want more to operate in school committees, that we have different allocations. We share with you in October, once all the amounts are in here, sort of each position and what the split is, just so you're aware of it, and the desire for things to be more.
There's a spreadsheet that was put together last fall, as part of the budget process, that showed all of the shared positions, how they're spread. The majority of the shared positions are at thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-four. There are some outliers. My understanding is that those outliers have, they've been in place that way for a number of years, and for whatever, whatever the ration of was back, it was determined that way. But, so when there's a new type of position, like, like what I talked about with that point six in the central office, we should figure that out, which pays more sense.
Or you're also going to do the capital project, or you're just taking that order?
Great, so that's there for your, for your review, then there's clearly an application to be done.
Anybody have any questions on that? If you had a question about technology plan progress?
Yeah.
And I may have not translated that well, if you want to just describe what you're talking about.
Sure. Yeah, there's, I just, we had a busy summer of, especially a lot of infrastructure updates. I would like to see, or just have an update, how our technology plan and various supplements, how we've made progress, how that checks back to the, to our overall team document that everyone spent so much time creating last year.
It's improved, didn't you?
Yes, exactly. So that was not the agenda today, but that's.
I apologize, that's my fault, I didn't like that.
Yeah, I guess it was a lot of, it was all out of capital.
So the headroom rebuild was out of capital, the, all of the other devices that make a supplement, where do they operate?
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to just tie, so some of this, the capital goes into the overall plan, but then a lot of some of the other small pieces of money, the supplements, just to help keep those documents, you know, keep the value of those documents, and let's check back to see how we're doing. So our progress is good.
Right, right. And that's the guide you use in the first quarter, I mean, that I go back to my text to make sure.
Great, check back.
Exactly, so I have like, running those processes.
Great.
So just facilities updated, Bill mentioned, we can take over the facilities, like, for school opens, and saw some of the projects that are already completed, about the bathroom, the log gym mats are in, cafeteria tables were delivered before school started, I mean, either since the AM two, they're then all set up, so they were, even waiting for those. I was thinking, it's good to see the drainage work, but you see there's the water changing somewhere, so the drainage is there, and then the sidewalk, I mean, it's awesome, it's a busy summer on campus door, around the street, it's on, great floor split, and I would say, Peter said, we can take this time, not half, avoid a half of having for the writing.
Having the info, yes. It's like, no, it's like the Brian Armors, do you want?
Where the dolls come from.
So that's going to be a better. So the only capital project that I think is still open is the continuing window project, so the design piece is what.
Right. So we'll be, we'll be having a capital meeting soon.
Yes, so to round out that agenda, we will be scheduling a capital subcommittee meeting very soon. We, we're a little behind the process that we have been the past years, but we still, but there's, some work been going on behind the scenes, so that there'll be a lot of information shared with the subcommittee. And we still fully expect to have the first draft of the FY eighteen capital for the upcoming meeting, that's our, that's our plan. So.
A draft?
Yeah, it'll be the first draft.
And then we may have a meeting prior.
Right. Right. Well, the subcommittee will be, will.
Yes.
And then the only other thing on the capital update is, in your, in the communications that was sent, it was just some information about the special town meeting and the calendar. So when I looked, when I received that and I looked at that, I noticed that the warrant for that special town meeting is closing before this meeting. And there had been some discussion off and on in the last six months about the access road, and bringing that up to par, to a level where buses will be able to use that for egress on a daily basis, not just necessarily for emergency use. Our, Ed Wagner has, has a, has a general cost estimate on what it would take to do that, I think it's somewhere in the five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollar range. I think people are aware that there's a, there's a one million dollar earmark for that project that the state legislature passed as part of a capital bond bill. I want to say, I think it was two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, right? That process means that the legislature approved the appropriation of that money. The actual appropriation of that money is now in the hands of the, of the governor. And, and that money hasn't been appropriated for six or seven years. It's not unusual with this kind of legislation. I think the total package was two hundred and twenty-five million dollars. That was part of that particular capital bond bill, and there's usually one every year. Some items sometimes never get funded, whether this one ever will eventually, who knows? But the public safety committee and the building committee at various times over the last year have taken up, had some discussions on, not necessarily waiting, but do whatever it needs to take to get that access road to a point where buses can use it. Anyway, the bottom line is that, given the calendar, and I knew the public safety committee was meeting right at the end of August, and I was not aware yet what the outcome of that discussion was, I knew they were discussing that road, and possibly, you know, it did be something to bring to special town meeting. I did meet with Dave Williams and asked if he could put a placeholder on the warrants in case there was, in case the public safety committee was looking to bring that forward, which he did. And then the next day, we were able to confirm the outcome of that public safety committee meeting at the end of August. What came from that meeting is that the public safety committee, I don't know, I don't know if it's consensus or unanimous, but there's a desire to move forward that at some time, that would like to work with the school committee to talk further about that, with the possibility of perhaps putting it on a warrant article for the spring town meeting, the fall town meeting, just wait until, if there wasn't enough time. So that is not going to be on the warrant. So I just wanted to give you that context, because I know when I asked for a placeholder, there was, there was information that was distributed to various, to various individuals that had updated, you know, potential warrant articles, and that was on there. But that's, I want to just make that.
Does this, I recall, and that, that was on the warrant before, whose article was it? It wasn't the student's?
I don't know, next, I'll work, I'll have to do it to kind of figure out, who's the appropriate body to bring that forward?
Sure, free access, all the information would have a previous. Can I just ask really quickly, so seeing some of this, you're putting on the wind drivers, which is a large sum, and that, and this.
No, there's going to have to be, obviously, there's a process and discussion, but, but my sense from last year was that, I could be wrong, but, but my sense is that the one priority project, if you're going to have one priority project on the capital, my sense was it was the completion of the replacement. There's this one last phase, there's been some playing money already spent, there's still about twenty-six thousand dollars for the design that we have to get done. And then more importantly, we did have an estimate of somewhere in the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, two sixty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar range. If that estimate were to continue to go forward, that's what the final estimate was, there's still money in various shares capital projects that remains, that is been some full American station, and discussions that we've had with both the capital, the town's capital committee and the advisory committee, about utilizing what the balance is in the various capital accounts that the school committee to make up, basically that balance I last saw, over half, over half of what the estimated cost is. So wouldn't the ask, wouldn't necessarily be two sixty, or be less than that? That's not on second.
I can't, I can't see the road being capital.
No, no, I think it's a separate one.
Well, it's a separate one, I'm just saying, though, if it's viewed as school, that's how we view by the.
There's a lot more discussion to go before.
And also, I mean, the big number in the onsite inside report, looking forward, is the roof, which is a million bucks. So, but other than, once the windows get done, everything else is manageable. And the roof was repaired, thanks to Al, but if something like that could give us another, I mean, by the year. All right. So that's kind of funny, I think you added a district tuition fee, you want to get that early?
Yes, so, email packet was a memo from me regarding this proposed tuition fee. I hope that I was able to provide you the context and the background for why this recommendation's coming to the committee. Do you have a copy of the policy relative to students from outside Sherburne attending? If there's a special education, if, if, if the reasons were, make sense. We're talking about two, two of our Dover students who have actually attended Pine Hill School the last thirty years, but as part of a technical collaborative program. That program, when we informed them last year, that unfortunately, because we're adding classrooms, classrooms, we couldn't at least access, to at least access space for them, there was an assumption, I'm not proud, that they would find a new location. In fact, closer to the end of the year, it was probably the end of April, tech made a decision that they were not going to relocate that program, they were going to disband. So anyway, I won't get into the details, but, but I have approved those two students attending Pine Hill. The guidelines that are in the attached policy were meant, decision, the decision on placement was not made until into June, as we continue to look carefully at the enrollments, because the policy relies on space being available, and, you know, that was really a large issue. But in the end, the judgment, and working with Butler, who interpreted it into grades, their fact was going to be space available, so we're, we're happy frankly, that we're able to provide the services that these students need, any facility that they bear for. So I think that's a good thing. So the next step is, the school committee needs to establish a tuition rate. So I lay out what the circumstances are, we've already talked about a one-to-one EA that is providing service for students, that individual, that cost is actually already being formed by the local schools. And when I did a little bit of research, you know, this is not something that happens a lot. It's not unusual, but there are a lot of districts that have tuitioning in special education students. So what I did find was that one of the common, common data points to look at of what to charge was the per pupil cost, and so that's what my recommendation is based on. I think if this is something that we continue to do and are able to do for the right reasons, and I think working with Dover makes, makes sense in this regard. If it's, at this point, I don't think, I don't think I would consider students, well, I wouldn't be considering students for any other purpose. But, so, so, so using the per pupil cost, I think, is a consistent way over the years to look at that charge. The latest, and to use the data that comes from DESI. So that's what this, this recommendation is based on. The latest data from DESI is the FY fifteen numbers, that per pupil rate, that per pupil cost to Sherburne is nineteen five three four. So I would say that that would be the base rate, and then what I, what I tried to articulate in the recommendation, and, and I think that, I wrote it that way, because if, if you're inclined to, to make, if you're inclined to move in this direction and use those numbers, I mean, you can substitute other numbers, but it was written in a way that it would be the motion to, to make the.
Do I have any questions, Doc? Is this at all, the numbers are.
Just to be clear, the per pupil cost then, for those two students, would be paid by the, by Dover?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Any questions?
Somebody went up.
Sorry. The per pupil, is that based on special ed? Or, can I remember, look, we're just at the, some branch I think across, just trying to understand how to calculate, so.
It's the cost of all, that nineteen includes the cost of all in district special education cost, as well as the acquisition, that's all combined.
Now, a question within the committee, or maybe even US superintendent, maybe this type of motion, are we now setting an effective policy if student number three came in, or if, because it's for students, I look at the motion as it's written, it says tuition rate for students attending Pine Hill. So to me, that means a general, so if someone else was being enrolled, and we've already said, well, then it's nineteen five three four.
Yeah, no, that's a, actually, that's a good point, I can.
Like, do you need to be specific?
Yeah.
So the way this is written, set tuition for students attending Pine Hill School from outside the district. So to me, that's a general statement. So we're talking in this case specifically about the two students from Dover, but if it's not specified as these two students from Dover, or something overboard specifically, are we now, if we pass this motion as it's written, does it bind us to that fee for any additional occurrence of students coming?
Does it school year?
Right, and it is superintendent, but this is, this is special, in other words, if it were other circumstances, it would be the, that's the program that we choose not to participate in every year.
Well, sure.
Yeah, so we, we, but one would argue, well, it'd be different.
Well, they may have different circumstances, so, so I, Scott, I think it's a good point. I would suggest then, where it says that the Sherburne School Committee set a tuition rate for, between four students, insert the following phrase, for the two students authorized by the superintendent to attend Pine Hill School from the district, well, by that provision. by the superintendent to attend Pine Hill School from the district, well, as approved by the school.